Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Join Councilman Thomas in our pledge.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And remain standing for our prayer. And please pray with me. Oh God heavenly father, we come to you so thankful for the blessings that you give to us as individuals, as a council, and as a city. We ask in this deliberation today that you guide us to listen actively, to be a participant in the dialogue and the discussion of this day. Please infuse us with great wisdom to help direct this city as we venture into our future and guide us in as we become even a greater city than what we are today. In your name we pray. Amen. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of February 5th. Second item on the agenda is public comments, announcements, recognitions. We have none. The third item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which is consent agenda item number A. Approval of the minutes of Public Works Authority meeting, January 15th. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval by all council present to approve the agenda. That being the last item on the agenda, the Public Works Authority, that we are adjourned. And I call to order our city council meeting, February 5th. Second item is the consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the special city council meeting of January 15th. And B is approval to declare select city property identified as computers and a 1988 Ford van as surplus property and allow purchasing agents to dispose of said property. I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of all council present to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question on that? How is this published whenever they do have sales and stuff like that?
We published it to our website and we also posted on our, it's an auction, online auction forum.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, I've never seen it anywhere, so I just wondered.
Item number three, discussion and possible action on approving resolution 2019-04. Allow city staff to move forward with the application of a C, ACOG grant for reconstruction and rehab of the bridge on Harrison Avenue west of Wentz Street. Staff comments first, please.
If I could hand out that document, I think it might make it a little easier to follow. When we submitted the application for these improvements on Harrison in Oklahoma, it was suggested to us from ACOG that we might want to split it into two applications. And then it could also be considered as one whole application. And what I've handed out to you, if you look at it in blue is the total project, which includes removal and filling in where Harrison Street Bridge is by the stadium. And the estimated ACOG project score on that was 47.81. And the total construction, as we already approved to apply for, was a little over $3.8 million. And when you add in engineering and utility locations, which are 100% local funds, whereas the construction part was 80% federal funds and 20% match, the total would be 4.3 with 3.1 of it being federal and our local share 1.2. If you divide it into two projects, the Harrison portion still includes the bridge. As a standalone project, that score would be 66.67 points, which stands a much better opportunity to be funded. And the construction cost with contingency for that portion, just doing the Harrison Street, including the bridge, is $1,588,000 with some change. The federal share, again 80% of construction, are $1.271,000. And local share, 317. And then add in the 100% local funds for engineering and utilities. That makes that total project $1,892,000, with our federal share being $1,271,000 with some change. And the local share, 621,000. With this, we do get to include removal of Harrison Street Bridge and filling that area in. If we did that, if you remember, if we did that as a standalone project by itself, it was going to be 1.2 and all that would be 100% local funding. So if just the Harrison portion of that application is approved, you're going to be spending 621,000 local money and it includes the bridge, plus you get some drainage improvements versus spending 1.2 million of local funds just to do the bridge. The Oklahoma portion, that's what brings it down from a scoring. Standalone, it would only score 34.75 points. And you can see in the green there, the total of that project is $2,692,280, with the federal share over 1.8 and our local share $857,694. If we only get the Harrison portion, which probably stands as a standalone project, the most likelihood to get funded, we won't be doing as much drainage improvements to address the watershed that comes from the temple west to downtown, that drainage basin. But we will get some significant drainage improvements along Harrison. And we will also be able to address the bridge on Harrison Street by the stadium. I have drawings in here if you want me to show you how the two projects actually break out. But I'll address those if you want me to. But I thought this spreadsheet would tell you, kind of show you from a funding standpoint and a scoring standpoint, how it would compare during the total project versus Harrison Street portion of it and Oklahoma portion. And so what you will be doing tonight, if you adopted two resolutions, is we will have three applications, basically. One for Harrison Street portion, one for Oklahoma, and then a total.
Questions by council? And the timeline for the submission or review of these by ACOG?
I would let the city engineer address that.
They told us mid-March.
Mid-March?
Yes.
And they review all, they would be reviewing all three of these projects at the same time?
Yes, they're in the process right now. And they just came back with these recommendations.
Okay.
Mid-March, they should have everything scored and make announcements.
And then if we were unsuccessful, let's just say we were successful in the Harrison portion. Resubmission for the Oklahoma portion would be another year or are?
It would be next, when did we submit this last time? January, it'd be next January.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, what we're voting on is the Harrison portion?
We're voting on both of it. They, ACOG recommended that we break it up to increase our chances. And so we thought, well, it'd be smarter to go ahead and leave us, you know, the two together, have the two individuals and we'll see what scores the best, because there's other competition, obviously. But...
So we're just moving forward with the whole project?
So what we've done, we've already submitted for the entire project.
Right.
Now tonight, you're adopting two resolutions, we're splitting it into two pieces. And so one resolution would be to approve the Harrison Street portion. And the second would be to approve the Oklahoma Street portion.
Okay.
So you would actually have three applications in.
Okay. You got a first and a second. Okay, thank you.
And what's the odds of, Bill, what's the odds of us getting that? You think we'll get a shot at it or do you know?
I don't know. I, I, the fact that they're asking us to, you know, maybe make these adjustments in the application tells me something. I know this was, if we get Harrison funded and only Harrison, that would be a great blessing, really.
I agree with you.
Well, it sounds like, you know, the good news is they're saying, they're at least suggesting that there's another way that at least gives you a shot at getting a portion of it.
Right. I don't think they would have suggested it to her.
Well, so are they.
They're non-biased.
Yeah.
And by, if I could have one other question, by doing, if we only get the Harrison project, it also, it's not blocking out the Oklahoma project. In fact, you could be able to tie into it with little or no problem down the road?
Yes, sir. Perfect.
I'm good.
It could be that, Mike, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain, now I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward on the approval of resolution 2019-04 on that ACOG grant. Item number four, discussion and possible action on approving resolution 2019-05. So moved. I guess you've already discussed that. We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, folks. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward approving resolution 2019-05 on that second portion of that ACOG grant with the Oklahoma portion. Item number five, discussion, possible action on ordinance number 3315, amending Guthrie Code of Ordinance concerning residential, uh, outlined buildings. Staff, comments?
Unless there's additional discussion, I think the decision is, you know, is it in the format you want to approve it or is it where you want to table it for additional time to review it and answer questions? And I think that's the pleasure of the city council.
Okay, any discussion of staff?
I think that the staff and Planning Commission have done a really good job with this. I think that it's really, the way it stands at the moment, it can always be amended. And I think it should go on through.
I don't think there's anything in this that requires... That we can't change.
That we can't change and it actually makes things much better than it is now, so.
Okay, I know in our previous discussion, there was some dialogue. Councilman Thomas, on the last statement.
Yeah, that would be the second motion that I would suggest we do not make to declare it an emergency, because there's no emergency here for our charter. You don't declare emergency just because you want to have a, have it, make it active tomorrow. You have a reason to do that and we don't have such a reason.
And that would be interpretation of definition of public health and safety. So that would be a matter of the city council's interpretation.
Says for the immediate preservation of peace, health, or safety, and I don't see any...
Let's read the ordinance.
Says an emergency ordinance isn't an ordinance which, in the judgment of the council, is necessary for the immediate preservation of peace.
I understand, sir, but that's still subject to interpretation, that language.
I don't see any, I don't see any reason for that, but I...
I understand and you can see no reason for it, but it still comes down to a matter of interpretation, what that phrase means.
Okay, you can't say we can table this because it's not an emergency and then say we need an emergency in the same breath. How's that?
No, if you pass it tonight, it's 30 days before it goes into effect. And I thought I heard the council kind of of a consensus say they weren't in favor of the emergency tonight. So you can approve the ordinance if you want to or you can table the ordinance. If you approve it tonight, it'll go into effect 30 days.
Well, I would say that I would make a motion to go ahead and approve the ordinance and it'd go into effect in 30 days.
Without declaring an emergency.
Without declaring an emergency.
I would check it that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve the ordinance as submitted to go into effect 30 days from this date. Item number six, discussion, possible action, ordinance number 3316, closing of East 15th Street, Popular, Popular Street.
Currently non-conforming on its front and side yard setbacks. It's got, let me go to that survey. It has less than five feet on the side yard. And what they are proposing on the survey that's provided in your packet is that since that, we have no plans of paving that block of poplar. And, and that would, that additional 15 feet on their lot would put them into conformance on their side yard setback and give them a little over eight feet. We have, through the process of closure, have reached out to any utility company service providers in the area. I have that included as well. And the only objection that was received was through ONG. And they actually sent me a map that's in your packet that showed infrastructure on two adjacent roads, but not on this portion of poplar or in the alleyway. So we are comfortable with recommending approval of this item. This will also help them. They are rehabilitating this home so that we have quality home options in Guthrie. This is going to get hung up in financing if we don't alleviate these issues. I would make note, they'll still have to go to Board of Adjustment to get a variance on their front yard setback, which is 2.5 feet. Needs to be a 25-foot according to ordinance. And Planning Commission did unanimously approve this item. And so with that said, I would recommend approval. And the applicant is also here tonight if you all have additional questions.
So this was a, going to be a street or an alley at one point?
It was plotted as Poplar Street. And it is paved on other blocks, but not this block between Perkins and Grant.
Poplar's the first block west of Pine, right?
I believe that's correct without having a map in front of me.
And there's nothing south of Grant.
East of Pine, I think.
I guess, and this also, I noticed in this, in the revision section too, that if it ever was deemed that that had to be open, the city could retain that or regain that, that property?
So they will, if this is approved, they will take it to district court and file to vacate that.
And then it would be abandoned?
So it cannot be reopened.
Okay, just like the alleys, when you vacate alleys, it goes through, okay, that's...
Does it become part of their, goes into their legal of their property?
Yes, it would, it would become part of Lot 10, which is their lot, and would make a conforming side yard setback for their home.
Once it's vacated, by district court.
Yeah, they have to, this is the first step. We close it showing we have no objection. For it to become part of their property, they have to go to district court and vacate it.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Well, I just have one last other question before you do that. That's only 15, that's only half the right of way of the street. So the other 15 foot of the right of way, is that staying with city or is that going to go ahead and be vacated also?
No, that will stay with the city.
So it could be an alley at that point?
Yes, and that will still be a roadway easement. This will just be, we tried to give, or work with applicant to do the minimum, so it was the least invasive, but yet solved the problem of their property.
Okay.
And one of the utilities initially was objectionable to closing this full width of the street.
Okay, so it just basically turns a street into a cross alley, like a lot of them. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Well, there's nothing there right now, is there?
No.
No.
No. There's nothing there, just this particular home.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval from councilman present to approve the closing of the East 15th Street of Popular, feet of Popular Street between North Right Of Way and Grant Avenue and, and the northwest boundary of Block 84. Okay, thank you.
That Popular or Poplar?
Poplar.
Why do you ask?
Depends on where you're from.
Sometimes up in Minnesota, we get a little extra stuff.
Minnesota, soda man.
Okay, anyway. Item number seven, discussion, possible action, special use permit for a medical facility at the Fairgrounds. I'm going to recuse myself. Mayor, will you take charge?
Thank you, sir. Okay. It is item seven, discussion, possible...
Why are you even?
Yes.
On a special use permit for a medical facility at Fairgrounds Road on South Division Street in General Residential Zoning District R2. Could we have report from staff, please?
Sure. So this is a zone, general residential. It's a 1.39 acre tract that has Division frontage. In our zoning ordinance, 2422, we have as a special use permitted on review, you can have a medical facility in R2 zoning, which is what this would be. That's the term that we have. I don't know that urgent cares were invented in 85 when the verbiage of our ordinance was. But that is the applicant's, that is their proposal, is to do urgent care on this lot. We also have them here tonight if you have further questions. I would make note on one thing that we are looking for special use permit approval. However, this parcel does lie within the 100-year floodplain. And so they would need to adhere to the extra measures that are required two foot above freeboard base flood elevation in order to construct in that area. So this would just be approval for the special use of the medical facility in R2. They would still need to meet all the parameters to obtain a building permit and meet regulations when building in the floodplain.
Are they building that next door to the water plant, the water treatment plant?
Yes, that, that's the very southwest corner of Division and Fairgrounds Road. And if you look on the zoning map, it's one of the only pieces that has frontage on Division that's still zoned residential. It probably just didn't have an opportunity or a project that came up to fall through to have been rezoned. But it's that, it's that bright blue color and it's obviously prime commercial property. So we would recommend approval at this time.
So moved. Second?
So we do have a motion?
Well, we got someone, we need to have one speaking or what?
Do we need, does anybody like to speak? No? So we do have a motion and a second? Okay, everybody want to vote?
If you'd like to entertain one. If you'd like to entertain.
It already has been done. It has been entertained.
You can have a discussion.
Vice Mayor?
But if you want to have discussion, that's what I'm asking.
Ask if there's any opposition.
There's no opposition here, is there?
He's the property owner.
Okay.
My name is Abe Gossem, but I own this subject property. I've owned this property since mid-'90s. Of course, probably you all remember what it looked like and what it's done over the years. We took care of it. And the reason we haven't really discussed it as far as rezoning, because there has not been anything interesting to me to be able to justify. But I feel like this project, it's, it's good for the community and I think we need that in Guthrie. So I ask for your approval.
I would agree with Abe. I think it's a perfect spot.
Yeah, I think it's a good place.
Thank you.
Is there any objections? Does anybody have any objections who'd like to? Appears there are no objections and we already have a motion and a second. So please vote. Show us our votes, please. All unanimous votes for yes by those who are present. There we go, that's going to be good. I think it'll be good.
And the mayor slammed the door.
Yeah, and the mayor slammed the door. And the mayor may come back now.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion, possible action on a special use permit for mobile home at 1702 East Grant in a single-family resident zoning district R1. Staff comments?
So this came to Planning Commission last month. It's also a special use permit. Planning Commission unanimously denied this application. And I think the reasoning behind that is by our zoning code, the only district that a mobile home is permitted in is R6, which is a manufactured housing district or mobile home park. We currently have one left zoned that, but it's not an active mobile home park. This is a current mobile home, a 2014 model, that has been on a parcel located in Logan County outside of city limits. We get calls to the Buildings Services Department weekly from people asking if they can have mobile homes inside city limits. And we tell them it is not allowed by ordinance. This is the only method as a special use permit to get that approval. However, I would say that Planning Commission and staff feel that it's setting a precedence for every exception that we make on a case-by-case basis. There are a couple, about six blocks from this city lot. There are a couple mobile homes that are there. They're rather old, probably over a decade old. I can't speak to how they came into fruition. But there was a unanimous recommendation to deny this based on what we want our community to look, what kind of construction we want as a precedence. And we feel any exception made to that is just a gateway to look for more of those types of applications. And so it was unanimously denied. I don't believe, I don't believe our applicant is here this evening. But if you have any other questions, I'm here and available to answer.
Is there anybody here to speak for the applicant?
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your vote, please. See the votes. By a vote of five to one, the...
I didn't intend that to be that. He denied, so I was voting against the original motion, I'm sorry. Mine should have been, I'm for the denial too. My bad.
With a verbal change, it is unanimous to vote to, to not allow the special permit. I am, number nine is city manager report.
I have no report tonight.
No report. Item number 10 is comments from members of the city council. Councilman Thomas.
I just want to repeat what I said up in the workshop. Thanks to the Planning Commission for all the work you did on that ordinance. That was really good. I think you've moved us forward and took some great initiative to see a problem, fix it. We appreciate that, because we didn't, we didn't have as much hashing to do and I appreciate that. that.
Thanks. Councilman Bathroyd.
I didn't, I echo that, I agree. You guys do a great job. The, that's all I've got.
Councilman Case.
I'd like to affirm the same. Tell everybody to keep on plugging. Guthrie's getting along pretty good right now, so keep it up.
Good. Councilman Taylor.
Rebecca, I hate you're leaving. I understand why, but, and I, I told you a while ago. Also, Chris, the family, sorry to hear about what happened. I know a lot of people I don't know about, if you haven't, you can talk to Chris about it. It was a great service the other day on Saturday and we'll see what happens, folks. I appreciate everything everybody does. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Yes, thank you, again, Planning Commission staff for putting all that together. That's a lot of hard work for the ordinances and things. I think it makes, it'll make the city a whole lot better, makes, brings things more into, it's more understandable. It's not as ambiguous as what it was, so thank you and for everything you all do.
Just a, a couple of quick comments. We had the, the great opportunity to host the Lieutenant Governor for about four hours out of his schedule last week. And Leroy and the staff and some, some citizens were involved in making some great presentations about our community, about where we've been and where we're, most importantly, where we're headed. It was very impressive, presentations. The Lieutenant Governor, as well as Senator Hall, Representative Mize, were all making comments. They were actively engaged. I, I think we made a number of very, very good points. Focus was on tourism and, and what we are doing with the film industry. And then we used that, that opportunity to talk about more things that are happening in Guthrie and where we're headed. But again, to carve out four hours of Lieutenant Governor's time, I think was pretty remarkable and it was, it was well done by everybody involved. So congratulations to the staff. Thank you for the staff for the hard work and putting that on. Leroy, thank you for your leadership in making a, a significant impression upon the new leadership in our, in our state government. We've got some, some opportunities for citizens. We've got a vacancy in our Forestry Advisory Board, our Convention and Visitors Bureau, our Board of Adjustments, and we've got an upcoming one in Historic Preservation. So there's some opportunities there for citizens who want to get more directly engaged in having direct input in the direction of our, of our great community. So go online to our, our webpage, it'll give you, you can actually see the, the form that you need to fill out there. Fill it out, send it in and glad to have you more engaged with Team Guthrie. With that, let me move on to item number 11, which is consider approval to convene into executive session for purpose of discussing, purpose of purchase of real property or land, purpose of discussing the employment hiring of a new city attorney, and the purpose of discussing, discussing negotiations with our FOP, with our Police Collective Bargaining Unit. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
Submit your votes. That is unanimous, everybody to move into executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, okay, I reconvene our city council meeting of February 5th. Item number 12, consider action on options to purchase industrial site for economic development. No action taken. Item number 13, consider action on city attorney. No action taken at this time. Item number 14, consider action on FOP, Collective Bargaining Agreement. No action taken at this time. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the last item on our...